We're good. Okay, we will call this meeting to order. I will ask if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest. I'm not aware of any at this point, but if at some point throughout the meeting you find that you do, please declare it at that time. Adoption of minutes at the regular meeting of council of December 22, 2020. If I can have a mover and seconder, please. It is moved by councillor Kinney and seconded by councillor Wells. Resolve that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held December 22, 2020 are hereby adopted as circulated. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead councillor Foster, you wish to speak?
Thank you, your worship. On the copy I have, it shows that I was in attendance there. I understand it's been corrected on the public one, but just let you know I was not there.
Okay, thank you for that. All those in favor? And that is carried, thank you. Deputations, presentations, petitions and public meetings, we do not have any comment and question period. Madam clerk, did we have anyone register for today?
Your worship, no, no registrations for today.
Okay, thank you. Unfinished business, there is none. Correspondence received for information. Ministry of Transportation's letter with regard to the gas tax program. If I could have a mover and seconder for this, please. Councillor Watson and Deputy Mayor Bray. The council received the letter dated January 14, 2021 from the Ministry of Transportation pertaining to the 2020-21 Gas Tax Program. For information, is there any discussion on this item? All those in favor? And that is carried. Next, we have correspondence from the Nada Wassaga Valley Conservation Authority with regard to the Source Protection Committee. Councillor Wells is a member of that committee and we're well represented there. This is looking for more members and it's to be received for information. If I could have a mover and seconder? Councillor Wells, you wish to speak?
Thank you, your worship. Just to mention, the Source Protection Committee is made up of a number of cohorts from representing various sectors of the of the community of Nada Wassaga Valley Conservation Authority. So this opening as a municipal member is as a result of the retirement and resignation of one of the current municipal members. So that's where it's that's where it's opened up from. I'm not aware, even though I sit on that committee as a municipal member from Wasaga Beach, I'm not aware of any restriction that says that another person from Wasaga Beach cannot also be a municipal member. So but that's, you know, NVCA would be able to answer that question.
Right. I can have a mover and seconder? Moved by councillor Kinney, seconded by councillor Foster. The council received the letter dated January 15, 2021 from the Nada Wassaga Valley Conservation Authority pertaining to the Source Protection Committee. Replacement of municipal members for information. There's any discussion? All those in favor? And that is carried. Next is correspondence from the for Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility Letter. Dated January 15, Seniors Active Living Centre Programme Funding. If I could have a mover and seconder, please. Councillor Boulanger and councillor Foster. The council received the letter dated January 15, 2021 from the Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility pertaining to the Seniors Active Living Centre Programme Funding. For information, is there any discussion? Councillor Kinney?
Thank you, your worship. This and item 7.14. I just wanted to say that I think it's great that we are getting some recognition for our senior living center in the way of funding and the funding I know will be put to good use for our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor? And that is carried. And a mover and seconder for item 7.1.4, dealing with the Active Living Centre. Councillor Kinney and councillor Wells. The council received the letter dated January 15, 2021 from the Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility pertaining to the Seniors Active Living Centres Programme 2020-21 Confirming Confirmation of Funding Wasaga Beach Active Living Centre. For information, all those in favor? And that is carried. Next is correspondence from Kin Canada and it's a letter thanking others, supporting them, but I think a shout out to them as well. They do great work in our community and we appreciate everything that they do. If I could have a mover and seconder for this motion. Councillor Kinney and councillor Foster. The council received a letter of January 20, 2021 from the Kin Canada Wasaga Beach Connect Club pertaining to holiday season donations. For information. Councillor Kinney?
Thank you, your worship. It was really nice to get a positive letter and I'm echoing your comments about all the great work that they've done now and in the future and hopefully we can keep them a viable organization. Thank you.
You. Okay, if there's nothing else, all those in favor? And that is carried. Correspondence requiring action. We have a letter here with regard to closure of non-essential businesses during the pandemic. I think fairness to all businesses during this time is essential and I fully support this, but I will be looking for a mover and seconder. Councillor Wells and councillor Watson. The council received the letter dated December 22, 2020 from the township of Nairn and Hyman pertaining to the closure of non-essential businesses during the pandemic for information. And further that the town of Wasaga Beach supports the township of Nairn and Hyman's resolution by sending a further letter of support to the premier. Is there any discussion on this? Councillor Kinney?
Thank you, your worship. I'm just fully supportive of the letter because Wasaga Beach has so many small businesses that have been detrimentally affected by the closure. It would be really positive if the province could open up their view of what's essential because to that mom hot business, what they do is essential. And as a result of that, I hope this letter and letters from other communities does their magic. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bray?
Thank you. Further ado, I know that the province is doing their best to help us through this pandemic and not all of the decisions obviously affect us all equally. So happy to see this letter. I think that there certainly is some tweaking that they could do to make it safe for for the majority as well as fair to the businesses. But I really like the last or second to last paragraph that says that the provincial government be requested to address the inequity created between small business required to close and businesses permitted to open and continue sales. Because I think the equity is a really important part of this. It isn't that some are open and that some are closed. It's more that there should be a level playing field for those that have been mandated to close. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing further, all those in favor? And that is carried. There are no items referred. Moving on to the committee and board and staff reports. We will go to coordinated committee reports and we will start with community services. Councillor Kinney?
Thank you, your worship. The following are the highlights of the January 14, 2021 Community Services Section of the Coordinated Committee. Committee received a presentation on a schematic design for the new twin pad arena and library as well as the related budget. Committee is recommending that council approve the update scope for the new facility as a schematic design. In addition, the committee is recommending that council approve the revised distribution of expenses for the project based on a more refined design while maintaining the total budget of $59 million. Also, the committee is recommending that council approve an amendment to the contract of McLannan Jenkins Millers, a architect, sorry, your worship, Architect Limited, increasing their fees by $168,193 based on a propositional increase in the construction cost of the project. Staff has requested that the proposal for the in from the cold Wasaga Beach Organization to use the rec hall at the Wasaga Stars Arena be referred back to staff so they can address recent information about other changes to the program that have come to light and properly inform council to the amendment amended program. On behalf of the Community Service Section of the Coordinated Committee, I ask council that council approve the recommendations in this report. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you councillor Kinney. And just for council, the motion that will be read at the end of everyone's reports will include a section that would would remove item 3.5.1 and refer that back to staff and that is dealing with the in from the cold program that councillor Kinney has mentioned. So if there's no questions for councillor Kinney on his report, we will move to Public Works councillor Watson.
Thank you, your worship. The following are the highlights from the January 14, 2021 Public Works Section of Coordinated Committee. Committee is recommending that the existing contract for the provision of the silver metal waste receptacles with 2156905 Ontario Limited, Mr Sean Mahoney, Carrying Hands be allowed to lapse and the town issue a request for proposals to supply and maintain new waste and recycling receptacles in town. Director of Public Works Kevin Malon noted in a report to committee that the recommendation to release a new RFP is not a reflection of poor performance by Mr Mahoney, but rather a need to replace dated infrastructure now at the end of its lifespan. You know that the town has enjoyed a successful and collaborative relationship with Mr Mahoney over the years. Committee received from information the report on the park block for phase one in the Sunnydale Trails Secondary Plan Development and accepted the park block conceptual design in principle. Secondary plan covers 635 acres in the south end of town on the east side of Sunnydale Road. When fully built out, it is estimated approximately 2,750 residential units will be constructed in this area as well as new commercial amenities, a new elementary school, a new secondary school. Pacific Homes Phase One represents 604 residential units. The park block is almost five acres of land and will include a market area, a covered skating rink, children's play space with swings and structures, mini soccer field, pickleball court, space for a splash pad in the future and a trail system. A report from staff notes the soccer field and related amenities are slated for construction in the fall of 2022 in tandem with the new elementary school, which will be built by the Simcoe County District School Board. Playground structures are slated for 2023, a plaza in 2025, the market area, rink, pickleball court and other amenities in the fall of 2026. This is an exciting development in our community and another sign that Wasaga Beach is indeed moving forward. In other matters, the committee received the water pollution control plant report and the drinking water system report, both showing the two systems are functioning to standards. Public transit reports were also received for information. On behalf of the Public Works Section of Coordinated Committee, I ask that council approve the recommendations in this report.
Thank you. Is there any questions of councillor Watson? Okay, we'll move to Development Committee councillor Foster, please.
Thank you, your worship. The following are the highlights from the January 14, 2020 Development Services Section of the Coordinated Committee. The committee received for information the December 2020 building permit report. The building permit report notes that the town issued 552 permits for the year to date, including 38 permits in December. This represents a construction value of $90 million for the year. Permits brought in almost $700,000 in fees for the town in 2020. The town issued 15 permits for commercial additions and renovations for the year, indicating strong activity in the business sector. This is for the this is for work to update existing businesses and to renovate spaces for new ventures. Most commercial units are full and various new businesses are in the process of coming online. The committee received the staff report on the town of Wasaga Beach Municipal Contribution to the South Georgian Bay Tourism Report for information. Committee is recommending the council approve a $15,000 contribution from the Economic Development Operational Budget to the South Georgian Bay Tourism so the organization can continue to deliver visitor information services throughout 2021. As an aside, I didn't declare a conflict committee on that either. The committee is also recommending that council approve a one-time funding contribution for an additional $7,000 for the continuation of the Regional Recovery and Resilience Plan, resulting in a total contribution of $22,000 to the South Georgian Bay Tourism for the year. Through the plan, South Georgian Bay Tourism is marketing the region to help support the local tourism economy during the pandemic. Staff believe the relationship with the South Georgian Bay Tourism remains a viable and valuable one. On behalf of the Development Services Section of the Coordinated Committee, I ask that council support the recommendations in this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for councillor Foster? Okay, moving on to general government, deputy mayor Bray, please.
Thank you, Mayor Byfold Chief. The following are the highlights from the January 14, 2021 General Government Section of Coordinated Committee. Committee received the municipal law enforcement activities report for December, showing another busy month for bylaw officers. Department received 109 calls for service during the month. Calls were for such matters as noise, property standards, parking and animal control. Committee also received for information the multi-year accessibility plan progress report. The report notes the various ways the town is meeting the requirements of the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act and the integrated standards. Noted in the report was the town's launch of a new AODA compliant municipal website in October 2020. The site is located at www.wasagabeach.com. The site is the best spot to get accurate and up-to-date town information. Committee also received the 2020 year-end Wasaga Beach Cemetery Report. The report noted staff budgeted for road and ground improvements at the cemetery in 2020, but the pandemic has delayed the work until 2021. Purchase of lots and niches continues at the cemetery as do internments. Finally, committee confirmed the direction of the director of public works regarding lease matter. On behalf of the General Government Section of Coordinated Committee, I ask that council approve the recommendations within this report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of deputy mayor Bray? Okay, if I can have a mover and seconder for the coordinated committee reports of January 14, deputy mayor Bray and councillor Kinney. The council received the coordinated committee reports of January 14, 2021 as circulated and approves all actions contained therein apart from item 3.5.1, which we referred back to staff for further review. All those in favor? And that is carried. Moving on to Committee of the Whole Minutes. The following are the highlights from the January 21 Committee of the Whole Meeting. The committee is recommending council authorize the town to extend the software support services provided by Marmac Software for $7,250 plus HST. The cost of the extension will be expensed to the building department, software and licenses and maintenance budget line and funded by either in-year revenues or if required, the building reserve. The extension will allow the continued full use of the MyLisa package used for the town's land management data in the building and planning departments and the municipal law enforcement department while the town changes to new software. The committee received the Blue Flag Program Report as information and recommends council agree to continue with the program as well as a new program called the Green Ribbon Program. After a one-year period, the town would consider the value of the two programs. The Green Ribbon Program, new to the town, is similar but more locally focused stewardship program managed by the Lake Huron Centre for Coastal Conservation. Additional details about the two programs are in the related staff report. Committee is recommending council authorize staff to hold a public meeting on proposed town-initiated amendments to the official plan and zoning bylaw as they relate to the downtown and proposed amendments to the Downtown Community Improvement Plan. Council has provided direction to staff to amend the downtown planning policy framework to add flexibility, support the beachfront redevelopment initiative and further implement the Downtown Development Master Plan. These proposed amendments will help achieve council's objectives. The town has made efforts to work with the private sector to redevelop the beachfront and an RFP process is ongoing to solicit development proposals. Also, the committee is recommending council receive the treasurer's report on the development charge background study update for information and that council direct staff to prepare a new development charge bylaw reflecting new development charge rates based on the recommended phase-in schedule outlined in option three of the staff report. In addition, the committee is recommending council approve the new non-residential rate of $122.50 per square meter. Staff reviewed various implementation options and believe option three best meets the town's financial needs while providing some phasing in benefit for developers to adjust their budgets. The recommended non-residential rate keeps the town competitive with adjacent municipalities. As well, the committee is recommending council renew the agreement with the county of Simcoe for the provision of integrity commissioner services, which means that principal integrity will continue to deliver integrity commissioner services for the town. And the committee recommends council approve a lease renewal for 93 Beach Drive Unit B Beaver Tales based on the town standard lease. Details are in the related staff report. On behalf of Committee of the Whole, I ask that council approve the recommendations in this report. Are there any discussion items? Councillor Boulanger?
Thank you, your worship. Just related to the development charges. This was just last Thursday where I referred this back to staff and that motion was defeated and then I opposed the motion. I see we're coming up on amendment in the near future where you had indicated last Thursday that the developer that raised concerns that it was normal questions and we didn't expect any change. I now see that there's a $706 reduction on a residential unit's freestanding. And according to the treasurer's forecast for the budgets for the first full year of implementation, which would be next year, that would represent $211,000 shortfall. Now, as a community, we've been very fortunate to receive some COVID infrastructure grants that will probably allow us to stay on budget. But over the long haul, that's that's going to be $706, I believe, on every unit. So and the other question, and I don't think it was covered in this meeting, was just the fact that still would like to see over the first few years how many of the units are covered under the DC freeze related to COVID because I I still believe that's going to be more than a non-material change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Okay. If I can have a mover and seconder for the Committee of the Whole Minutes, please. Councillor Wells and councillor Kinney. The council received the Committee of the Whole Report of January 21, 2021 as circulated and approves all actions contained therein. All those in favor? And those opposed? I'm sorry councillor Boulanger is not on the screen anymore, so I'm not sure how he's voting on here. So I'll ask again, all those in favor? Okay. So that is carried unanimously, thank you. Moving on to the accounts for December 1, 2020 to December 31, 2020. Deputy Mayor Bray, did you wish to speak to this?
Just to say that all accounts have been reviewed at a coordinated committee by the different sections of our committees. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I can have a mover and seconder, please. Councillor Kinney and councillor Foster. The council approved the December 1 to 31, 2020 accounts in the amount of $14,695,514.34. All those in favor? And that is carried. Next, we have a report from the director of public works with regard to Transit Fair Online Payment. If I could have a mover and seconder for this, please. Councillor Kinney and councillor Boulanger. The council approved the recommendation to proceed with the Transit Fair Online Payment Upgrade in partnership with Transit Fair and further that the director of public works be authorized to acquire the Transit Fair Online Payment Upgrade in the amount of $9,000 excluding HST. Is there any discussion on this item? All those in favor? And that is carried, thank you. Next is a report from the economic development officer with regard to cannabis. If I could have a mover and seconder for this, please. Deputy Mayor Bray and councillor Kinney. The council received the municipal cannabis retail policy statement report as information. The council adopt the cannabis retail policy statement and bylaw included in this report for the purpose of reviewing and commenting on store license applications. The council direct the clerk to share this policy statement with the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario for consideration when they process applications for retail cannabis store authorizations in the town of Wasaga Beach. And that council delegate authority to the chief administrative officer or their designate, the authority to file future objections to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario on behalf of council for applications undergoing public notice that are located within the setbacks described in this policy. Is there any discussion on this? Councillor Foster?
There we go. Yes, your worship, I've been talking to Tyler on a couple items on this and my concern, my my question, I suppose, has to do with the the setback specifically in the main beach area. I think if I'm reading it right, they're suggesting that it be dropped to 20 meters, which is basically a standard road allowance from some sensitive areas. So they're 150 meters from schools, then a variety of things like that, but 20 meters in commercial zones. And and my concern, I guess, is is how close it is to the provincial parks. And I know Tyler has suggested that the liquor store and beer store are close, but they're more than 20 meters away. I would suggest closer to 50. So I have a little concern about that. I also would just ask for a little clarification because he there's specifically a conversation about playgrounds. And if I remember right, the beach is considered a playground as a whole, the entire beach section, the part up above it is a park. But we also have parks four, five, and I think six also have play structures. How does how does that work? Maybe Tyler could give me a little clarity on that. I'd appreciate that.
Sure. Tyler?
Through you, your worship. Councillor Foster, I think there may be just a point of clarification that I should probably announce. The what is being proposed is 150-meter setback from municipal facilities, i.e. Recplex Youth Centre Arena Library, that offer programming that are catered to youth. So it's not the 20-meter setback from those those uses, it's it's 150. At this time in the environment that we have, we do not have municipal facilities that that offer that same usage at beach area one. So the applications that we've received to date would not be impacted in that they cannot establish themselves at beach area one, including Beach Drive. Playgrounds were considered a use that we were looking at that that was covered in conjunction with our parks so that we would consider the beach areas one through six, Allenwood, New Wasaga Beach as potential recreational sites that catered to youth and perhaps vulnerable persons. And perhaps that retail locations in proximity to those sites could influence those persons. However, upon reviewing those and the related restrictions of uses found elsewhere in the community, in particular, commercial nodes that are kind of in our official plan as as areas that we're trying to facilitate urbanization in, there were a lot of conflicts. And it was deemed to be too highly restrictive when looking at and considering parks and playgrounds across the town. And I don't know if Doug Heron wants to comment further on on that.
Is Doug on here? There he is.
Yeah. With your permission, your worship?
Sure.
Just to reiterate what what Tyler was trying to explain, the we did staff did consider including setback from parks. And what we found is that when we located all the parks on the maps, that certain locations, for instance, the one at 1800 Mosley that the certain locations, for instance, the one at eighteen hundred Mosley would have been excluded from being a viable site, simply because there is a park right next door, almost across the road, there's a little park yet, and then there's the dog park and the, and the, and the bike park as well. So what was, what is considered a viable site within a commercial node would have been excluded. Similarly, had we included parks as a restrictive area with a setback from parks, all of the beach area one node would have excluded cannabis retail stores as well, simply because the definition of a park would have included the provincial park lands as well. So the staff took a simpler approach that any area that is zoned for retail would be permissive for a retail cannabis store. And the only other application was that any facility that catered to youth, so had programming for youth or vulnerable individuals, would also be excluded. The rationale for having the parks was that it also catered to youth, but it wasn't, there wasn't specific programming in the parks. So we decided to exclude parks. So ergo, the, the current policies that are suggested to council would allow cannabis retail anywhere within the, the beach area one. And pretty much anywhere in any of the identified commercial nodes that the town is looking to install.
Okay, thanks Doug. Counselor Foster, did you wish to follow up?
Yeah, I'm a little, I, I get it. I'm a little uncomfortable with it, I got to admit. I'm not opposed to the idea of having recreational cannabis stores in, in the town. It's just when you talk about things like the main beach. So we're keeping it away from schools, which is provincial, and that's fine. Yet the area where our kids hang out in the summer, or a lot of our kids hang out in the summer, doesn't have that same protection. Neither does. And, and the brave, or Doug brought it up, sorry, is the things like the skate park and the BMX park is, you know, I guess there's not a program there, but it certainly is an area, those are two areas where kids hang out all the time. Anyway, I would prefer to see, you know, even fifty meters, but anyway, I'll leave it for further discussion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wells.
Thank you, your worship. Actually, the, my question was, has been partially addressed by Doug, and that was the issue around the skate park and that area. And I, I appreciate, okay, if it's zoned retail, then we're going to, to allow it. I'm, I'm struggling with that. I, I think the priority is, is backwards. The, the priority for me should have been the closeness to youth-oriented activities and the secondary one be the retail. It appears that it's just been flipped the opposite way. Retail is the priority and youth activity is the secondary consideration. So I'm a little uncomfortable with that decision. I guess we can try it. We can always change it if we find that it's going to be a difficulty, but I'm, I'm reticent on the whole issue partly because of that. The other question I had for Tyler or Doug is, in terms of youth, I'm not sure sort of what definition you start with, with youth, young people. What about commercial daycare centers? We do have one in the area of Beck and Main, and yet that's smack in the middle of a retail corner, a commercial corner with the medical center there, as well as a couple, several stores. Are daycare centers, commercial daycare centers, licensed, provincially licensed daycare centers, are they not considered a factor?
Okay, that would be through you, your worship. Staff did actually look at daycare centers as a sensitive use. And we reasoned that the daycare centers, there is adult supervision at those locations. So any, any children who would be attending at the daycare center would be under supervision. And they wouldn't have free rein or free access to leave the daycare and access a cannabis retail store. So for that reason, we opted to not include daycare centers as one of those sensitive uses. Thank you.
Hey, Counselor, and actually Doug, if I could, just for clarity, Counselor Wells had made the comment that, you know, if it, if it's, we can go this way, but then if it doesn't work out, we, we can change it. Is that actually possible? Because I think once we do this, if somebody opens up a store in an area, I think it'd be very difficult for us to then turn around and change it and try and make them move their business. Can you just clarify that?
I think you've assessed it correctly, your worship, that if a store is established based on the AGCO criteria and then this proposed town criteria, it would be difficult to remove that store from that location. Any change to the criteria would apply to new stores coming along after the change.
Okay, Counselor Wells, did I misunderstand you? I saw your card go back.
No, I guess I probably didn't state it clearly enough. I fully recognize that once it was established, it's there. A change would only apply to any new application, and I fully understood that when I made my statement.
Okay, thank you. Tyler, you had something to add to that?
Thank you, your worship. Just an, an addition to what Doug is saying to Counselor Wells. Another argument that was made for daycares in particular is that they were less impressionable to high school and socializing students in those, in those sites. And likely, one of, one of the reasons why it wasn't deemed or packaged in with schools on the AGCO mandated the hundred and fifty meter setback. As well, to this current topic, the, the AGCO, what, what the municipal policy statement effectively does is just state what sensitive uses are in the community. The AGCO does not necessarily need to adopt those sensitive uses in, in part of their consideration for a retail site. So the notion of reviewing and revising the policy statement, I think would just be a matter of refreshing the notice to the AGCO on what the existing sensitive uses are as outlined by council.
Okay, thank you. I've got Counselor Kinney, then Counselor Watson, then Counselor Belange. So Counselor Kinney?
Thank you, your worship. I've been listening and I, I tend to agree with the concept about the daycare. And then there was a concept or mention that it's not as sensitive as our teenagers, but we already mentioned about our dog park, our skate park, our bike, the beach area, that's where all our sensitive young people congregate. And I totally realize that the province has a mandate to put cannabis stores in. And I'm not against cannabis stores, but I think we've got to put them in the right places so that individuals, one, have free access to them, but wise choices from a health point of view. And again, from what Tyler is saying, and I read it in his report, and it was a good report, that we're putting this towards the province as what council believes is the right use of the land. But they can totally disregard it. And as a result of that, I feel that even, even if they are going to disregard it, I think as council, we've got to get a positive message out to our community that we want to look after our youth. And I really think from a town point of view, if we can do something more substantial in those areas where, yes, it's, it's a node for business, but this is a business, as Tyler said, very similar to our Brewers Retail and our LCBO. However, this is a new business and something I think we should try and strive to help our health unit and our whole medical system with new users and try and get wise choices put across. And as a result of that, make sure that they're not involved in or exposed to things that they shouldn't be. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you. So I do have two more written down, Counselor Watson and Counselor Belange. I do hear some concern. So after Counselor Belange speaks, if, if there's a desire of council to revert back or to do something different, then I'll be looking to council for that. So Counselor Watson?
Thank you, your worship. Page two of the staff report, the last paragraph, it's pretty clear that the provincial regulation states in terms of land use planning, you know, you cannot prohibit from, you cannot pass zoning by law to prohibit retail sales of cannabis. And it's also intended that cannabis retail stores would be permitted in all zones where retail stores are permitted. So I think our manager of planning, Mr. Heron and Tyler, had mentioned that basically these are in existing commercial nodes. And according to the province, you cannot prohibit them from being there.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Belange.
Yes, maybe Tyler, thank you, your honor. Maybe Tyler could clarify, but I also understand that there's quite a number of additional safeguards. If, if I, I believe I read earlier that a cannabis store, when you enter the store, you're not able to see any of the store. There has to be an area where you are qualified, that they identify and qualify your age to make sure you're of an age that you can enter the store. So it's, the, the safeguard is not just the distance. There's also a safeguard built into the operation of the location to ensure that anyone underage does not enter the store or allowed to see any contents of the store, if I'm correct. Thank you.
Tyler, can you answer that?
Through you, your worship. Counselor Belange is correct. There is an item called the, the registrar's standards. These are issued to prospective retailers for cannabis. And they're, they are component of the application process over, over its lifetime. There are in those standards, certain requirements that go beyond the hundred and fifty meter setback to schools that go beyond the zoning requirements for commercial retail. And that go beyond the sensitive uses that, that are really outlined in this particular report. And they, they are in place to limit exposure and influence for youth and vulnerable persons. Counselor Belange mentioned one of them. The intent is not to have pedestrian citizens outside the establishment be able to see any of the product or merchandise inside the store. And the, there are security measures that are in place that, that limit and restrict in particular, youth and vulnerable persons, but you cannot transit, for instance, through the retail environment into another separate retailer. These are totally enclosed spaces. There is a particular training for staff and management to get their own license to handle those goods, similar to a smart cert- certification.
Okay. Any other final comments? I did read the motion. It was moved by Deputy Mayor Bray and seconded by Counselor Kinney. So unless I see something different, I will call the vote. All those in favor? And those opposed? So that is carried. And actually, sorry, if you could just keep them up for a minute, those in favor? So it was by a vote of five to two with Counselor Foster and Counselor Kinney in opposition. Moving on to the Director of Finance's treasurer report with regard to development charges. If I can have a mover and second for that, please. Counselor Kinney? And Counselor Wells, the council directs staff to prepare a new development charge bylaw reflecting the amended proposed development charge rates from Hempson Consultants as per the attached schedule. And further, the council received the response to the single letter received in response to the proposed development charges. Is there any discussion? All those, oh, Counselor Belange?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to vote opposed, not, not to the change, but just to the fact that I, I don't know at this point whether or not the developer has had an opportunity to respond to the response that he received from our consultant. And if I could ask the clerk for a clarification, at, at the approval of coordinated committee, the mayor seems surprised that I voted in favor. When, when you, when I voted opposed and that's on record, I'm not changing my vote. I'm just approving the accuracy of, of the actions that were approved by council, is my understanding. Otherwise, I would have opposed some items, but I thought that was previously duly recorded. So I didn't think it was necessary to vote opposed again. Is that correct?
Dina?
In regards to whether your vote in favor of adopting all the actions, you're adopting the actions as they are in the report?
Yes, but they had already been approved by the majority of council. My, my opposition remains duly noted, is my question.
Correct. All votes are.
Thank you.
Okay. And, and just for further clarification, I don't think I commented when you, when you voted earlier. So I, I don't know where you thought I was surprised. But anyways, we will move on. I have read the motion. All those in favor? And those opposed? That is approved by a vote of six to one with Counselor Belange in opposition. Next, we will move on to the CAO's verbal report with regard to COVID. So Mr. CAO?
Thank you, worship. Members of council, good afternoon. So this afternoon, my particular report will be brief, but before I go, we have our communications officer. Mike Jennings is going to give an update from the province's perspective. And then we have our deputy fire chief, who's going to speak to members of council with respect to an update from the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit. So I see Mr. Jennings is there, your worship?
Go ahead, Mr. Jennings.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to start back on January fifteenth and then work my way forward to some of our more recent announcements from the province. January fifteenth, the province said it is hiring more case managers and contact tracers. They're building the provincial workforce to sixteen hundred by mid-February. This will bring the total number of contact, contract, contact tracers to nearly fifty-six hundred staff. That same day, the province asked Ontarians for their ideas on how to support families and workers and businesses during the pandemic. And this is part of the outreach that they are doing for their twenty-twenty-one budget consultations. The following day, the sixteenth, the province said it's extending its reopening Ontario Act orders for another thirty days. January eighteenth, the province said it is providing up to one hundred and twenty-five million to add over five hundred critical care and high-intensity medicine beds to hospitals and areas with high rates of COVID transmission. A portion of this funding will be used to temporarily transition Mackenzie Health's Cortolucci Vaughan Hospital into a system-wide resource that can support the province's COVID response. The province, provincially, there are calls for various individuals and groups for provincially funded paid sick leave due to the pandemic. NDP leader Andrea Horvath recently called on the government to ask the federal government to send in the military to help with the COVID outbreak at Roberta Place in Barry. And as I'm sure you're all aware, this facility continues to deal with that situation. We learned last week that Ontario is expecting no shipments from Pfizer of COVID vaccine this week due to production issues. Pfizer's facility is undergoing modifications in the coming weeks to increase the number of doses that it can ship. Premier Ford has said he's angry about the situation. Despite these challenges, the province is continuing to roll out its vaccine program. General Rick Hillier said Friday in a letter that was sent to all stakeholders that the Pfizer production issue will not stop Ontario from getting to its most vulnerable vaccination of residents, staff, and essential caregivers of all long-term care homes and high-risk retirement homes. vaccination of residents, staff, and essential caregivers of all long-term care homes and high-risk retirement homes will continue. The province said January 20th that it's expanding its workplace inspection blitzes. There are 300 additional officers that are taking part in these blitzes to ensure that COVID regulations are being followed. Those blitzes continued in regions throughout the province this past weekend. We learned last week that students in seven of the province's public health units would return to class on Monday. That did happen. Simcoe County students are not part of this, however, and it's not clear yet when they will get back to class. And Monday marked the one-year anniversary of the first COVID case in Ontario, and it has certainly taken a toll on the people of this province. Since that anniversary, since one year ago, 5,846 Ontarians have died from COVID-19. Monday, Ontario officially extended the state of emergency and stay-at-home order by 14 days. And we learned today that more than 6,800 international travelers have been tested for COVID as part of the government's voluntary and free border testing pilot program at Pearson Airport. Ontario, as you've probably heard in the media, is continuing to call on the feds to strengthen its enforcement and testing measures at the airport. And your worship, that concludes my report to members of council.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Is there any questions on Mike's report? Okay. Oh, councillor Kenny?
Thank you, your worship. And to Mike's last point, I don't understand why the federal government will not look at international flights and tighten up their, their procedures on it. It's to me downfounded that they can't move in that direction. But that being said, great report, Mike. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Chief, you are next. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, your worship. Good afternoon, members of council. Globally, there have been now more than 99.8 million cases of COVID-19, and this includes 55.2 million recoveries and 2.14 million deaths. Nationally, we've experienced 753,000 cases, including 671,000 recoveries and 19,238 COVID-related deaths. Provincially, we've now had 262,000 cases with 227,000 recoveries, and as of yesterday, 5,854 deaths. The current number of Ontario residents that are hospitalized due to COVID-19 is 1,398. There's 397 individuals on ventilators, pardon me, admitted to the ICU, and 283 currently on ventilators. The current hospitalization rate of Ontario COVID-19 patients is 5% with a death rate of 2.3%. The provincial testing positivity rate is currently 5.5%, and to date, Ontario has completed just over 9.3 million COVID-19 tests. Within the region of Simcoe-Muskoka, there have been 5,207 reported cases, and this number has increased now to 131 deaths. There are 35 individuals currently hospitalized within Simcoe County, and the seven-day moving average within Simcoe-Muskoka is 42.1 cases per day. The percent positivity rate in our region is 3.3%, and there are now 20 active outbreaks in our region, including 11 institutions, three congregate settings, one community setting, and five workplaces. There have been just over 15,000 doses of the Pfizer vaccine administered in Simcoe-Muskoka as of yesterday. This was mainly administered to healthcare workers in local hospitals, long-term care residents and staff, as well as retirement homes. And this number now includes 932 individuals that have received both their first and second dose of the vaccine, and then additionally, we have another 2,846 individuals that are residents of long-term care homes that have received their first dose, and that number represents 89% of all residents in long-term care homes. Within Wasaga Beach, our number now sits at 121 reported cases by the health unit. We, that includes 98 recovered, two deaths, there are two hospitalized, and 18 recovering. The most recent case in Wasaga Beach was listed on January the 23rd, and Wasaga Beach continues to have one outbreak listed, and this is a childcare facility. I would just like to take two minutes of your time and just provide an update on the United Kingdom variant of the COVID-19 and the impacts that it's having on our region. So Public Health Ontario Laboratory has now confirmed that there are seven cases of the UK variant that they've seen within Simcoe County. Six of these cases are associated with the outbreak that is currently occurring at Roberta Place Long-Term Care in Barry. And the seventh case is in an individual who had close contact with a person who is part of a long-term care COVID-19 outbreak at Bradford Valley Care Community. The healthcare, the health unit is continuing to investigate all of these cases and perform contact tracing in hopes that they can stop the variant from spreading within the community. What we do know about COVID-19 variants is that it is common for all viruses to change as they spread throughout a population. And thus far with COVID-19, there are three variants that have been detected around the world. The United Kingdom variant is the most common variant worldwide and has been detected throughout Canada, and of course, it is the one that we're referring to within Simcoe County now. The South African variant has also been identified in Canada, however, it's only been seen in Alberta and British Columbia. And there is a third variant known as the Brazilian variant, however, it has not been detected in Canada thus far. So experts are studying how the virus is changing, and by understanding the genetic makeup of this virus, it helps us to understand how the changes in the virus might affect how it spreads and what happens to people who are now affected with it. So what we know specifically about the UK variant is that the first, it was first detected in the UK in September 2020 and is now widespread in London and southeast England. It has since been detected in numerous countries around the world, and more recently now in Ontario. And within Ontario, we have seen it in the Durham region, London, and now in the Simcoe-Muskoka Health Unit catchment area. The UK variant appears to spread more easily and quickly than the other variants that we know about. And at this time, both the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine developers have said that they do believe that their COVID-19 vaccines will be effective against this UK variant, which is great news. And this is likely because the part of the virus that has changed doesn't actually impact how the vaccinations work. So what we do not know about the UK variant at this point is how widely the new variant has spread within our community at this point. However, the health unit is continuing to investigate this as it is a matter of concern for them. We do not know how the illness caused by the new variants differs from the illness that's caused by the original strain. And finally, we do not know how these variants affect the existing therapies and vaccines, you know, that we would typically use. So what we can do is, you know, for our community now, more than ever, we just need to stay strong, continue the course, and continue to follow all public health safety measures and recommendations. So what we've been doing for a year now certainly still applies, and we just need to push forward and continue to do so. So staying home, you know, traveling only for essential reasons, practicing that physical distancing, wearing masks when around other individuals, indoors or outdoors if you can't maintain physical distance, monitoring yourself and family members for the development of symptoms, and of course, getting tested if needed. And finally, we do hope that everybody in the community does download the COVID-19 Alert mobile app as it's been proven in the past to, to limit the spread of COVID-19. So I know there's a lot of information there, but I appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks, deputy. Any questions for Craig at this point? No? Okay, thank you. Back to you, Mr. CAO.
Thank you, your worship. As I said, I will be brief. I want to just begin my remarks by commending staff for quickly reviewing the reloadable transit pass and bringing forward a recommendation to council for consideration. This will be a great tool going forward where members of the public will be able to reload this pass at home or on, on the bus. They will no longer need to come to any of our facilities to physically purchase a pass if they don't want to. So kudos to staff and, and thanks to members of council who earlier approved that initiative. We do not anticipate any changes to town operations as a result of the extension of the emergency order and the stay-at-home order for another 14 days. As I updated committee after, at our last meeting or our last, according to committee meeting, we've implemented a number of changes in our, in our work practices, and we're continuing with that, and our staff have adapted. Earlier today, command team reviewed the deadline for the payment of 2021 business license fees, and is recommending that council extend the deadline until businesses are open again. As members of council are aware, some of our businesses are required to be closed because they're non-essential. And we did mail out the business license renewals, and our business licensing team have been dealing with one-off requests to postpone the payment until the businesses are open again. So rather than deal with it in ad hoc manner, we felt that it would, we would bring it forward to, to council for consideration that, that council would give direction that there would be an extension to the deadlines for business license renewal fees during the period where businesses are closed, until such time as they're allowed to fully operate under provincial restrictions. And a motion has been prepared for her worship's consideration. Finally, in February, town staff will be meeting with Ontario Park staff to begin the discussion on the spring reopening of Wasaga Beach Provincial Park. We will be reviewing what took place in 2020 and looking for ways to deal with the matters that, that arise before the park formally opens in 2021. As we work through the planning, I will keep members of council informed. So your worship, members of council, that concludes my comments, and I'd be happy to take any questions that members of council may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. CAO, and I'll look to our, to our clerk. I know that a motion has been prepared that you would be looking to add on to the one that we have in our agenda for information, and you haven't furthered that. So we'll, we'll go to councillor Blanche first, and then I'll ask you to read that, please. Councillor Blanche?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Byfoldji. Just, just before we consider that motion, I would like to suggest we go one step further in that possibly offer a discounted rate for businesses that had to re, remain closed. That's an annual fee. And that, that discount could be, I would think, recoverable by the provincial COVID funding. So if that's something that council would consider, I would recommend that in addition.
Well, and I guess my suggestion would be if we're going to differ from what staff are recommending today, that it be referred back, because with every cutback on, on fees or anything like that, there isn't effect through other departments and our treasury and things like that. So if there's a change from what's being proposed, then I would ask that it be sent back. Councillor Kenny?
Thank you, your worship. I'm in favor of what's being proposed today. However, I do like what councillor Blanche is saying, not to stop something, and I looked at Dina. If we go forward with this motion, can a later day, after staff has had the chance to see how it would affect, bring back a report, knowing we already have one, thanks to our CAO in place, and then we could move forward deciding whether or not we should move in that direction. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. And Dina, are you able to maybe explain staff's reasoning for deferring the payment as opposed to completely eliminating it? There is still inspections. There still is things that has to happen. So maybe you can explain why staff is recommending what, what you are today.
Certainly, your worship. With each type of business, there is different requirements as far as inspections and different requirements for each one. So the, the business license renewal fee is, is different for each type of business. At times, the fee itself does not cover the costs of the municipality and for, as far as administration and inspections. Certainly, we have been working with any businesses that come forward and are having difficulty, and we've been very much working with payment on payment plans with them. I think this is a good strategy to move forward with. And at that time, we can look to, if there, if it continues, we can look to potentially discounting. That would potentially, potentially cause some administrative issues as some of the business licenses have already been renewed. For example, contractors were renewed in January. So therefore, we would have to go back and, to be fair to everybody, issue any refunds for whatever council chooses to do. But we can certainly look into any potential discounts that council would wish to put in place.
Okay. And again, I think we have to have a really good understanding, because if you start discounting some but not all, you know, some might be able to offer curbside but not open fully. So is that a different discount? So I think we have to be really careful if we start going off what's being recommended. But Deputy Mayor Bray, you had your hand up as well?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I, I think, I haven't heard the motion today, but I imagine that it's just open to deferring the collection, and I'm certainly willing to support that. If it's two months or six months, when those businesses get to open again, I think that's when the discussion on potentially prorating the fees might take place. But the business license fee isn't, you know, it's typically, it's a cost of doing business, but it's not more because you do business. So it's just, it's a setup fee. It's an annual, you know, I don't think most businesses would find it cost prohibitive. However, I do, from a cash flow point of view, that, you know, there isn't a lot of cash flowing right now, and I think anything we can do to defer it is, is great for the business community.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Dina, if I can get you to read the motion in our agenda as well as the addition?
I will have to.
Do you want me to read the first part?
If you don't mind, I don't have enough screen space.
Okay, sure. So the council received the January 26, 2021 verbal COVID-19 update from the CAO for information, and further that?
That council approved deadline extensions for business license renewal fees during the period where businesses are not permitted to fully operate due to provincial restrictions.
Okay, so I'll be looking for a mover and seconder for that motion. So we'll go with Deputy Mayor Bray and councillor Kenny? Any further discussion? All those in favour? And that is carried. Thank you. Next, we will go to community announcements, and we will start with councillor Foster.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to note I didn't talk about COVID today, but I'm going to now. So I have been, as everyone else, we've been trying our best to, to pretty well isolate all the time. But I did, I had signed up for the Rural Ontario Municipal Association Conference, which was yesterday, and today it's actually just finishing right now. And unfortunately, I missed the high cost of inaction, which is about the cannabis regime. That's on right at this moment. As those who've been to the Roma Conference know, it's a good chance to hear from provincial leaders and people from different parties, and we did all that. Obviously, there was a huge emphasis on, on COVID and its impact on municipalities. And again, the nice thing about something like this is that the, the leaders that are around are, are spending money like sailors on shore leave. So things like the O� Grant are going to be staying the same. There's a $695 million more for the Safe Restart Agreement. There's 200 million more for broad, no, there's almost a billion more for broadband internet. And I just, I don't want to go over my time, but I just want to point out that in 2004, for those of us who were, were on council at that point, Dalton McGinty stood up. It was his first, it was his first conference. And he talked about high-speed broadband, broadband accessibility across the province. That was in 2004. He talked about it every time he was in, as did Kathleen Wynn, as has Rob Ford. And it was pointed out during this pandemic with these kind of calls that the need for broadband has become even more realistic and necessary. And the amount of money that was spent has been mind-boggling, and the results, I don't know why we're still talking about it. It should have been dealt with. That's my own thing. Just my little bit on COVID too, is we had a lunch meeting today with two of the doctors put on by the Ontario. Ontario Ministry of Health. And they were talking about the vaccine and distribution of it. And and they were, the doc, the one doc was quite good. This Dr. James White, who pointed out that you know, you really shouldn't go to the internet for your medical advice. And and he was pointing out there might be some resistance to vaccines. So he he stated statistically that you're getting a negative reaction to a COVID vaccine, you're one-tenth as likely as being hit by lightning. So we all think there's almost no chance you're going to hit by lightning. Well, it's one-tenth less than that. And and again, he talked about the number of tests and they've been following all this stuff that's going through. And so he said, if you have a history of severe allergic reactions, yeah, you should see your physician. But they've also been talking about immunocompromised, pregnant and lactating women, and they should of course see their doctor before doing it. But the stats, they say, don't show that as a real concern. But please don't take my word for it. Go to the Ontario Medical Association or Public Health to get it because that's where we get the real stats. But people shouldn't be timid about this this vaccine. It's been extremely well tested. And again, I think I'll wrap it up at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wells.
Come on. Thank you, Worship. I I guess it's been a fairly quiet month. I can report that there are three red, four black and six gray squirrels making regular use of the squirrel trail that goes across the front of my property. The red squirrels in particularly love the pine tree and they just about eliminated all the pine cones. My neighbor's cat was over yesterday and asked if I could invite the neighbors to come over for a drink on the outdoor patio somewhere in the next few days because the cat is fully disgusted with having them at home. Other than that, in all seriousness, my month has been relatively quiet. Responded to a few inquiries from residents and and business people in terms of looking for information related to shutdowns and and town policy, et cetera. But other than that, it's been fairly quiet.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Bray?
Thank you. Tough act to follow, Counselor Wells. It it has been Happy New Year. It has been an interesting month. All of our meetings are taking place via Zoom, whether they're county meetings, whether they're town meetings, whether they're, I had something else written down. Oh, the construction steering group for the new arena and library. So businesses continuing to move forward, which is exciting to see and to hear. I'm absolutely thrilled with the response from our command team. I know a couple of the suggestions that I kind of send in from things that I'm hearing out in the community from extending the hours at our outdoor rink to potentially adjusting the payment terms on the business fees. It's great to know that Town Hall is there and reacting to the things, the issues that really do matter to our residents. Final comment is I I too signed up for Roma, the the conference that Counselor Foster had spoken about. And absolutely every minister from the premier right down to to those introducing are speaking of COVID with genuine concern and and fear almost in their eyes. I think they really want us to get this message that this is serious, that it's getting closer to us than it has ever been. And now is the time to stay home, to wash your hands, to wear your mask if you must go out. But but do consider if you need to go out because, you know, it's it's costing our country billions to try to keep everybody safe and make sure that those medical services are there if and when we need them. So my final comment on COVID is that it's really nice to see our province taking it as seriously as they do. And the vaccines are coming and we just have to wait this out. My last, very last thing to say is I had found a hashtag science up first. And basically, it was saying misinformation is a dire imminent threat to the lives of all Canadians. It's proven to be one of the factors fueling COVID-19 infections and is dissuading Canadians from getting vaccinated. So, you know, as Counselor Foster pointed out, get your facts and make an informed decision that's right for you. But we are all in this together and we need to get through it together. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kinney?
Thank you, Worship. Due to the lockdown, like everybody, we've been doing our best to only go out when absolutely needed. However, we do do a lot of cross-country skiing at our Great Nordic Centre. And it's a great way to relieve stress during this lockdown. And I must commend our Wasaga Beach Ontario Park staff for increasing park use during this time by creating a fat bike route at our Nordic Centre. I do remember a chat I had with John Fisher at the 2019 February night ski about this enhancement. So way to go, guys. Your worship, I took an opportunity to call our new detachment acting commander, Andy Tate, to welcome to their community. It was a great talk to our new detachment commander, as I've known Andy for years. During this month, we have done our best to order needed items online from our local businesses for curb pickup. And I hope through our economical development officer, our local businesses are able to take advantage of some of the the new Ontario Small Business Support Grants. Finally, your worship, in addition, I have reached out to a few of our people in our community just to ensure that their mental wellness is well. And I challenge all of us to do that job a little bit better on recognizing mental health during this time and reaching out to those who may just need to talk, your worship. Thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor Belonge.
Thank you, Mayor Byfugie. Similar to Counselor Kinney, it's been quiet with lockdown, but I have been making a point to try to promote safe outdoor activity over the lockdown. And I certainly have a lot of friends and people that I talk to that are going a little stir crazy. So I've been out on our trails and for the most part, they're very underutilized. You can spend three hours and not see anyone else. We only travel in vehicles of people from the same household because that's important and social distance. But I would really encourage some outdoor activity. It is very good for both mental and physical health. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Watson?
Thank you, your worship. On December the 23rd, I joined other food bank volunteers in handing Christmas hampers out to the the clients of the food bank. I attended an executive and general meeting of the Wasaga Beach Builders Association and at our general meeting, our building department made a presentation to the Construction Association, bringing them up to date on some of the new regulations under the lockdown and cautioning them what we can and can't do. Attended the photo opportunity at the new site of our library and arena project. And the NVCA, of course, has been keeping me busy throughout the month. I attended the annual general meeting of the NVCA this past week and continuing to try and provide assistance for residents that are still having issues getting permits through the NVCA and working with them and a couple of onsite visits. And other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. My report, similar to Deputy Mayor's comment, there's been lots of Zoom meetings. Meetings about COVID, so the COVID team getting together, the Arena and Library Steering Committee, County Council, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, attended a chamber meeting, Wasaga Distribution Board meetings, I chaired the county's regional government review for service delivery and our first CPAC meeting with the acting commander, Andy Tate. So it was nice to welcome him. And along with that, just the regular emails and phone calls that normally come my way. So it's still been, still been busy. And with that, we will move to notices of motion, which I don't believe there are any motions where notice has previously been given. We have none. Calling of committee meetings, Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Worship. So the lineup for the month of February is on February 11th, Thursday, February 11th at 9:00 AM is coordinated committee. Follow the by the next Thursday, February 18th is committee the whole at 9:00 AM. And that'll be done virtually as well. And then our council meeting for the month of February is scheduled for Tuesday, February 23rd at 9:00 AM. And again, that'll be done virtually. Thank you, Worship.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to bylaws, we do have two bylaws pulled, item 202102, and that was pulled by staff and 202105 pulled by Counselor Belonge. So they will be voted on separately. But if I can have a mover and seconder for the rest of the bylaws? Counselor Kinney? And Deputy Mayor Bray resolved that the following bylaws be received and be deemed to have been read a first, second, and third time passed and numbered as follows. 202101, a bylaw to authorize an interim tax levy for 2021. 202103, a bylaw to authorize the execution of a lease agreement, 93 Beach Drive Unit B. 202104, a bylaw to authorize the execution of a letter of agreement between Her Majesty, the Queen in Right of the Province of Ontario, represented by the Minister of Transportation for the Province of Ontario and the Town of Wasaga Beach for funding provided under the dedicated gas tax funds for the public transportation program. 202106, a bylaw to adopt a policy statement for cannabis retail applications. And 202108, a bylaw to appoint a full-time municipal law enforcement officer and property standards officer Darren Trafford for the Town of Wasaga Beach and to repeal bylaw 2018-30 and bylaw 202101. Counselor Foster?
Your worship, if you wouldn't mind, can you pull the 2106, the cannabis retail, just because I took exception to it?
Okay, so all all except for the three that have been mentioned, the 202102, 202105 and the 202106. So we're voting on all others. All those in favor? And that is carried. So we move to 202102, and that has been pulled by staff. And that is dealing with a lease agreement. So I will read the motion resolved that a bylaw to authorize the execution of a lease agreement, 1888 Quandike Park Road, as amended to include include a mutually agreed renewal clause for an additional two years and to repeal bylaw 202083 be received and be deemed to have been read a first, second, and third time passed and numbered 202102. And I'll ask Garcia to speak to this, please.
Thank you, Worship. Members of council, in the lease, there was a renewal clause that for two years that was in the favor of the tenant. I spoke with the tenant about amending that clause to make it a mutual renewal clause for the two years and he was in agreement. So there is a very small amendment to the lease to make it a mutual renewal clause. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Can I have a mover and seconder for this, please? Moved by Counselor Kinney, seconded by Counselor Wells. I've already read the motion. All those in favor? And that is carried. Moving on to 202105, resolved the bylaw to authorize an amendment to bylaw 202064 being a contract with McClellan, Yonklin's Miller Architects, MJMA, be received and be deemed to have been read a first, second, and third time passed and numbered 202105. So if I can have a mover and seconder for this? Counselor Foster and Deputy Mayor Bray, need discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? And that is carried by a vote of six to one with Counselor Belonge in opposition. And we will move to 202106. If I can have a mover and seconder, please? Counselor Wells and Deputy Mayor Bray, a bylaw to adopt a policy statement for cannabis retail applications. All those in favor? And those opposed? So that is carried by a vote of six to one with Counselor Foster in opposition. And the confirmatory bylaw?
Sorry to interrupt, but I believe Counselor Kinney was also in opposition.
My apologies, these screens. So that would be a vote of five to two with Counselor or Counselor Foster and Counselor Kenny in opposition. Thank you for catching that. Confirmatory bylaw and mover and seconder, please? Counselor Kinney and Deputy Mayor Bray, 202107, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Wasaga Beach at its regular meeting held Tuesday, January 26, 2021, resolved that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Wasaga Beach at its regular meeting held Tuesday, January 26, 2021, be received and be deemed to have been read a first, second, and and third time passed and numbered 202107. All those in favor? And that is carried. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a great afternoon.